Remind everybody who's here and welcome you also that the meeting is being digitally recorded, so please be respective of each other, both as when you're listening and also when you're speaking. The Finance Committee right now does not have a quorum, so the next piece of business before we start the public hearing would be for you to formally open up. So we'll jump over that and hopefully Susan will comment and I'll defer to her. But in the meantime, we can get started. Nate, I'll turn it over to you if you want.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you to everybody who attended this evening. I am pleasantly, I'm pleased with the amount of people that are here this evening. I expected two, so that's good. I hope everybody here was able to watch the budget presentation from a few weeks ago or take the time to review the budget. There has been two updates since the original Town Administrator's proposed budget that was released last month. Mostly those updates were just bringing in different numbers as they became more and more true to the actual numbers that we are looking at. One of the biggest variables that we're working with this year is that the school has recently sent out their assessment of a 9.02% increase over last year when we had a 6% increase. Still, up until town meeting and up until it is voted otherwise, I will continue moving forward with the 6% in hopes that the numbers will come down to match something that it is least palatable or the very least manageable. In what I'm calling my doomsday variation of the budget, I have figured out ways to get to what they are asking for currently, but it is not pretty. So I'm hoping that that is not the route we end up having to go. I, Madam Chair, would you like a moment to bring your meeting to order?
Would you call your meeting to order? Okay.
Meeting called to order.
Okay.
For those of you who I have not met yet, I should have done this first. My name is Nate Boudreau. For the past five months, I have been the Town Administrator here in Hubbardston. I'm from Gardner, so my commute's not that bad. And this is my first budget, and it has been a wonderful learning experience. I was able to take it, build it from scratch, and I'm proud of what I've accomplished so far. Moving forward, I will build on that both this year and in the future. I guess I will open the public hearing to whomever would like to be publicly heard, either here or virtually. For those attending virtually, please raise your hand or write your question or public statement in the chat box. If there are any questions to be answered, I'm not trying to be a stickler here and say, no, only public hearings. I am willing and open to having a conversation and a back and forth. It's not, we're not the Boston Council and the Boston Mayor, so that will be good enough for us. So with that, I would like to introduce our accountant, live from Florida, Kelly. And Kelly's joining us this evening to answer, I'm only saying Kelly because I am unsure if Ponte Briant is correct.
Ponte Briant.
Ponte Briant, all right. That is Kelly's last name. But once again, thank you for joining us this evening, and whoever would like to go first, please raise their hand. Yes?
You mentioned the school budget.
Name and address.
Alora Overstreet, railroad, 111 railroad. The school budget and the doomsday. Can you tell me what that current COLA was for the teachers and their contracts for each of the?
We're unsure what it will be. I can likely pull those numbers up for you and we can talk about it either tomorrow or via email, but I can get those numbers for you. I do not know their previous contract off the top of my head, and their upcoming contract has not been released yet. So the numbers that were-
Is that still negotiating?
Yes, it's still negotiating. I got a meeting agenda from their administrative assistant for the town clerk to post just yesterday or today regarding the collective bargaining units.
Do you know in the past or the most recent past what the average teacher salary is?
Does anyone?
It ranges. There is a whole book over in the town clerk's office that tells you exactly how much everybody makes, including all their stipends. You can go through it name by name if you'd like for the whole damn district.
But the teachers get really complicated, right? Because they have different lanes and then they have longevity and then so it's-
I just wondered like what the average is, if you averaged it out, are we in the 60s, the 70s?
But that'd be a great question that we can throw over to the superintendent's office, and I bet they'd be happy to get us an answer to that.
So I imagine that that is the bulk of the assessment is teacher salaries, right?
That would be, that would be nice. I'm not willing to go as far as to agree with you that that is the bulk, but-
Usually most, so remember, it's not just the teachers, right? You have the teachers, the paraprofessionals, the custodians, the cafeteria workers. Everyone in the school system usually minus the administration itself is usually in the different unions, which makes it so complicated because they don't release one union contract until they finish negotiating all eight union contracts or whatever the number may be.
I see.
But usually it's a substantial amount of the assessment. You know, most towns, it has around like 80%, you know, at least around the 80% ballpark that has to do with wages.
Right. Thank you.
All right, next. Yes?
I'm Rita Caldwell. I'm on Burgess Road in Hubbardston. Concerned because I, first of all, just learned of this meeting today, but I did print out obviously a bunch of stuff. I'm concerned because our road is supposed to be being paved and it shows you're only going to Ragged Hill Road, you're not doing all of Burgess Road.
Are you on the dirt section?
Yes.
The town policy is, do you want to go for it or you want me to?
Go for it.
The town policy, if it's a dirt road, is to keep it a dirt road. You're not going to like that answer, but that's the answer.
No.
I don't disagree with you, but that is the town policy.
You're talking to a person who's gotten seven roads paved in a previous town.
Yep.
Superintendent Brown, would you like to speak to that? I'm being fancy.
Is he in?
Travis.
Can you hear me? Yes, we hear you. Thank you. So honestly, we don't have the money to repair the asphalt roads that we have now. If that was to change, it could be possibly something in the future, but you cap a dirt road right now is not in the foreseeable future.
Have grants been obtained for it?
That is something that you would, you would obviously have to go through the boards and everything and look at, and everybody would have to agree on the road. But it could mostly, it could be a possibility, but you'd have to have the cooperation of everybody.
I don't think there's a lot of grants out there for roads, right? So Massachusetts, our number one funding source for roads is Chapter 90 money. So we use Chapter 90 money first, and then usually each year if there's additional money, the legislature will often appropriate additional funds for roads. Like this past year was the Winter Recovery Act program, or RAP for short, where towns got, you know, between 30 and 100 and something thousand for our size for additional money for roads. Aside from that, the only other road programs are really like Mass Works. And the Mass Works program, when you do the road, it has to be like a substantial gateway from towns or industry or work. And a lot of times, a smaller road that is currently still dirt, unless it's a main gateway that just never got paved, is probably not going to qualify.
And the town administration, both right now and previously, do kind of chase all the grants we can possibly get. Within my first week here, Travis came up and told me that he was surprised that we had found out that a portion of Route 62 was going to be paved, but for no cost to the taxpayer of Hubbardston by the state, and it's through the efforts of Travis and the Select Board and a lot of our representatives who are willing to be outspoken. Those are more likely the roads that would be paved by the state because they are state roads, and as Heather said moments ago, it is most likely a economic opportunity to when they will pave the roads, much like what's going on downtown over the next year. So it's not something we're not willing to speak of, and we understand that there are, what Travis, 90 miles of roads here in Hubbardston?
Yes, just about 90.
Yeah, and we would, we would love to be able to service them all and make sure that everything is perfect, but it is 100% not financially feasible. We're the squeaky wheel at those meetings about traffic and paving in Chapter 90, and we are obviously willing to talk. I can give you my card right after this if you would like to speak about this further. It's something we're willing to talk about, but not something we have an answer to this evening, except for the fact that we have a policy that dirt roads remain dirt roads.
Does the highway have, Highway Department have the ability to pave roads?
No.
No.
Okay. My other concern is the fire department. I've read on Facebook how garage doors are falling on them when they're going out for calls. I've heard they do not have a functioning bathroom. They don't have sleeping quarters for the full-time fire people. The communication between the firemen on call in this tower that's being built intermittently, how is that being worked out?
Well, this is your meeting. Stay after this because two of the agenda items on tonight's Select Board meeting are the potential create, creation of a Public Safety Building Committee, which I am proposing, and based on our conversations that we had previously regarding what the Select Board's goals are for the future of public safety here in Hubbardston. It has been brought up several times previously, most recently in 2019, failing by, I believe, what, 50 votes?
Something like that.
Something like 50 to 75 votes. So the knowledge of the need is there, but when it comes time for the proposals and the time to vote on it and the time to talk on it, that's when we need people like yourself to come out and go to the town meetings and go to the polls to vote on them because it's all fine and dandy for the administration and the elected boards and the public safety professionals to want and need, but when the rubber meets the road, we've been let down time and time again. So you're more or less preaching to the choir here, but it's something we're 100% interested in seeing in the future because we know the need is there.
I do just want to clarify, they do have bathrooms and sliding inwards. They're not great, I'm not going to lie, like it's not great, but they do have them. I promise you, I've been in there numerous times.
I'd like to also, and I appreciate you bringing that up too, we've been aware for many, many years of our need, or not just in the fire department, but-
Oh, I have great police, fire-
To give you some, I don't know if you're aware of this, but just to add to what you're also saying, the fire station downtown quote, was basically a barn, and all of our equipment has to be custom-made to fit in there because it's so small. So that that adds to the cost of every time we have to replace a fire truck or whatever, it has to be custom-made if we want to put it in there. So it was not, we have no building in town that was ever made to be a fire station.
Have any grants been going after that?
And the ones up in the beyond there, we rent, we rent our space, which is unheard of too, that we're renting a fire department. Because if the person wants to raise their rent conceivably, they can do that and nothing we can do about it. So we've been very aware of this, and this is what we're trying to deal with and have been for many years. I've been on the board for 10 years and it's been an issue.
Does the town have property that they could build on?
Yes, well, that's what that antenna is, that's our property. That was originally, we got a half a million dollars from Senator Brewer at that time for Public Safety Building, Senior Senator, et cetera, and that's the land that it was for. And that's why it was initially cleared and the road that is through there. And the reason the antenna is there was the idea being with a public safety building, that's where it would be. So yes, we have the land. And the land is all checked out and everything ready to go, but what we don't have is the buildings.
Funding evidently.
Well, yeah.
Yeah.
And to speak to your question about grant opportunities, I know myself and my predecessors, every time we get the opportunity to talk to our state legislators, it is mentioned. On my letter to State Senator Ann Goby and State Representative Berthium, the top thing was, hey, can we have a million dollars to go after, after plans and site remediation? Also, can you please support the legislation that would create a Public Safety and Municipal Office Building Authority, much like they do with schools and the MSBA where municipalities in need can get upwards of 60% towards their municipal school buildings? I would, I and many other officials in almost all of the cities and towns in Massachusetts would love to see a public safety variation of that program. It has not yet been brought to fruition, but it's sure proposed every year, so.
Have you, has anyone spoke with the other towns that are going through the same thing and going by what they're doing?
Yes, like is the, is the short answer, but and it's, it's the same type of answer as with general funding issues. Like it would be, I would love a magic answer if you have one.
But would it be fair to say that those town, the voters in those towns approve the funding of the, of the building? And these voters have not?
A town that's recently been in a similar situation would be Ashby, and for years they were in the same situation as Hubbardston where it was no, no, no. And finally, they did get their yes, and now they're, they built their public safety building or their police station, I forget which one it actually is. But again, just to go back and not to beat a dead horse, when the time comes to actively promote the needs of the municipality, we need the residents and voters to speak up and get out and let their opinions be heard.
Takes a village.
All right, next.
I'd like to add just one thing, not about the fire, but to your issue in terms of the school budget. There are a lot of things that, that I've heard from other people, and to be totally transparent, I'm a retired teacher. I taught in Gardner for 35 years, so, but a lot of people, I think the teachers have become easy targets. Yes, they are negotiating now, but as long as I've been on the board, it's not, that's not the reason. Every year, it has gone up. And many of these things, which we have no control over, for example, additionally to what the government brought forth to us, the state has raised, for example, special education by over 12% in one fell swoop.
Yes, not to mention the energy costs.
And that is nothing we can even debate, or it's presented, you just have to absorb it. All of these things on top of everything else add, I'm not defending the number because it's just something that we've had to live with.
Right, just curious. It's only because it's a union, and typically the unions are able to negotiate for higher COLAs than non-unions most of the time, and I just wonder, and the rate of inflation that we've experienced last year, upwards of 10%, for the average person, average blue collar workers, COLA probably figures to 2% maybe?
As retired teacher, that's what I get from the state.
Yeah, and that's only based on first 16,000 or something, so, yeah, I totally get that, but I was just kind of curious as to what they're bargaining for and how much their, their COLAs were for the last contract period, just as a comparison.
And as Nate said, we, on that issue right now, we haven't heard anything.
Right.
But it is ongoing. They are in their contract negotiations this year. But thank you both again for listening.
And at the very, very least, I can say the superintendent's office is aware of our issues and aware of the fact that we are obligated to stay within certain means in order to make things work.
Right, Alora Overstreet, 111 railroad, again. The, times past, the assessments were, most of the assessment falls on, if I'm not mistaken, Hubbardston and Barry because they're the biggest out of the five, I believe.
Yep.
And at one point, I thought I had heard that Oakham went bankrupt. Is there anything on the table like that this year, or are all five towns contributing or able to contribute to that assessment?
I'm going to pull up the assessment right now. We're not at a point where we would know that yet.
Oh, okay.
Because at the town meeting, that's what one of the votes is about, is about funding the school at a certain point, either at what they're asking for or at a percentage that the town can be able to handle or level funding. The article can also be amended by someone on the town floor if they have enough support of their fellow residents to change it. So what we bring forth as the municipal government is not the end-all, be-all answer there, because last year, I know the percentage that the school was seeking was not approved at town meeting, but there was a proposed amendment to make it so. The amendment did fail. We went forward with the amount that my predecessor was proposing, and we all saw how that went. So, yeah.
Traditionally, we have a number, the town, town meeting traditionally goes with the number we have, and then it goes back to the school system, and traditionally, throughout the years, most of the towns don't pass the number that the school wants. So it gets kicked back to the school, which causes us to have a secondary special town meeting and sometimes a third special town meeting, which again, each time we do this, costs us money as well. I would love to see everyone get on the same page so we could work this out to begin with, so we wouldn't have to have all these fun special town meetings, and the school and the towns would all work together to come up to numbers that make sense for all parties involved. But yet, we are still not at that scenario, so us towns all have to pay extra money to do repetitive special town meetings to come up with numbers that nobody is happy with on any side.
Right.
And within my most recent budget update, which is titled Budget Update Two, in the finance and budget portion of the town website, I do have all of the most recent assessment data sent yesterday from the superintendent's office, where Hubbardston is quoted for $5,914,039.45. Forty-five cents is super important. And it's approximately, don't quote me on this, I don't have in front of me, $489,000 over last year. So that's where we are currently. I did speak with our, with one of the school committee representatives earlier today where she said, oh, that's not the final, but having a small understanding of the way the state legislature works, the, I can't imagine the final revision coming out of the Senate is going to be so drastically different from the House version that it makes a drastic change for us sitting here today.
We've also tried to be proactive, just to throw out the information to you folks, unsuccessfully, I might say, but proactive in the sense of the concern with the budget, the school budget aspect of it. We've reached out to the other four towns with the idea that we all get together, meaning of the board members, et cetera, and finance people as a unit so that we might be able to speak as one voice, because we all have to absorb the same problem every year. Unfortunately, we didn't get a positive return on that.
Really?
Yeah.
That's surprising.
And that was disappointing. I think we had one town that was willing, but, so we've made the attempt to try to do something, and we, we'll continue to do that. I just don't want people to think that we're just sitting back and-
Some of the other towns are in flux though, because they're missing key people like a town administrator and that sort of thing, so.
Rita from Burgess Road, yeah. I'm wondering, you said the two biggest towns, are they going by acreage of the towns or are they going by the population?
Population and income, there's a whole formula.
Yeah. We kind of get double whammy because we're the second largest for school populations, but yet we're like the most affluent, so we are the fun ones and we get double whammy. That's why our percentages are usually higher. Yeah? Welcome to Hubbardston.
Ma'am, I know you didn't love your hand. Yes?
Rosemary Southwick Williamsville Road. I was listening to a school committee meeting, and our, one of our members said that it was a $40 million budget this year in the school. Is that right?
Yeah, 39 something.
Yeah, 39.
39 something, yeah.
Between all the towns, state, everything, all the monies.
One high school.
No, not one high, yeah.
The region.
All the, the region, plus all the special ed, whether the kids go out, we have to pay for that.
Right, I understand that.
All of it, yes, all of it. All five towns, all the students.
I just wish they would stop blaming the special ed part of it, because that really is a, is a bulk, but there's-
It's not the issue.
It's not the issue, yeah. Anyway, that's my-
One of my major point of contention with the school this year is they're trying to take one-time COVID funding that they call ESSR money and make it work all the time. It's the, one of the basic rules of budgeting is you do not use one-time funds in your operational budget. We, I, in my proposal this year, I unfortunately have to break that rule, but that is a, an answer to a problem that was here before I, and unfortunately, I hope that the school can figure out how to make this work for them, but it's a, it's a large pill to swallow.
Again, Rosemary Southwick Williamsville Road. COVID money, how much money, real money did they get, the schools?
Do you happen to know ESSR values?
I don't know the school numbers.
They were, I mean, I was in Barry at the time, and they seemed to be happy and fine.
Millions.
Millions, yeah.
Yeah.
They did pretty good, those schools.
They did millions, but how does that, why doesn't that help us?
Because that millions ran out.
It goes directly to the schools for-
Where did it go?
To very valuable positions and programs that were incredibly useful during COVID where, when things were different. But now that we're heading back into a-
Normal?
A normal, I'm hesitant to use that word because this sure isn't what I remember as normal, but they are trying to maintain that level of service and that level of personnel, and it, best of luck to them, but it's sure hurting the small towns that are paying the bills. And the Student Opportunity Act in 2017 changed, and it took a lot of the focus and put it on the urban communities. And a lot of that came on the back of smaller rural communities. And many that I spoke to understand completely of why the urban communities, the Fitchbergs, the Springfields, would need more money, but it has to be done so on a, with a formula that is equitable enough to not bankrupt rural Massachusetts. And the superintendent's office, the legislatures, and the municipalities all know that that's, that's the conversation, but as we spoke about with the superintendent during their budget meeting, that is a long-term solution, and we need a short-term answer. So it's-
But who are they, who are they responsible for the COVID money? I mean, is it federal government doing a back check, what they're doing with it?
Oh, I'm, I'm almost certain that what they did with their COVID funds were above board and legal, all good, and it was great to have while it was there, but unfortunately, it goes away.
So they're still trying to do what they did with- So they're still trying to do what they did without the money that they were getting. Do you understand?
Yeah, so they're they're still keeping the programs.
But they're not without, we don't have the money to fund them. So like smaller class.
And they've created positions, more positions, and they wanna maintain those positions. And how often do you see a school removing positions?
So similar, so when we had we had the money, right, the ARPA funds for the town, we used it to give back to the businesses in the community. We also used it for one-time purchases. Some towns did do a, you know, a position that they started, but we tried to avoid that because we didn't wanna run into the predicament, right?
Right.
The money's out and all of a sudden now you gotta absorb that cost in the general budget, which we don't have the funds for.
And no town, the towns weren't in on the COVID money for the schools, so.
It was it was kinda separate. Some towns gave some of their COVID money, uh ARPA money to school. Or prior to ARPA was uh
CARES.
CARES, thank you.
It's a lovely acronym.
It's a DC thing.
Yeah.
It's a it's a Washington DC thing, that's what we're fighting.
Okay.
All right, anyone, anyone else?
Nate, are you able to throw up the um the budget? I just have some quick.
Yep. Gentlemen, raise your hand. Sir?
You, you wanna go ahead?
No, go for it.
Uh, Tim Harley, thirty-five Mount Jefferson Road. We've we've heard about a couple of concerns, public safety buildings and uh roads. Um, I think the town does a heck of a job with the budget that it has. But is there a is there a master list, a wishlist somewhere of uh things that the different departments would like to see that we don't have with the roads or with? Oh, with everything. I mean, town administration, the.
In theory, that is what our capital improvement
Plan.
Plan?
Yeah.
Yeah, short it on plan.
Yeah.
Like, that's what the operation.
Yeah.
That's what the CIP would be doing, but with ARPA and a lot of the excellent opportunities that we've had, mixed with some extreme turnover, the CIP may not be as loaded up as I or the department heads would like to see it. I'm hoping to kinda have a reevaluation year next year so that we can get a lot of the items kind of down the road, so that we have things to plan towards. My predecessor was planning a lot towards twenty twenty-four, so you'll see a lot of decent things happened over the last few years. We're going to be, we're proposing an ambulance in twenty twenty-four. Twenty twenty-four is where a large amount of debt payments are expiring, so there is some positive with all this. But the answer to your question, yes, there is a wishlist location. It's the capital improvement plan and mixed with the superintendent's road management plan would be what we would like to see in the future. But it could be better and I hope that it will be.
Alora, Hail Road, um, my question on the PSF, the Public Safety Facility, how it's it's failed every time? Because it was always introduced as a uh permanent two-and-a-half override. Is there a way to introduce that as a debt exclusion instead of a permanent override?
It should have been a debt exclusion because it's not a permanent.
It was, it was, it was, it was.
So I think the problem is, right, all of those pieces are all under the same law, which is Proposition Two-and-a-Half. You say Proposition Two-and-a-Half and people go into complete panic mode. So generally speaking, you have Prop Two-and-a-Half override, which is usually operating cash, right? Money to override the budget, money for the schools. You have your debt exclusion, right, so that's a large, long-term project, a public safety building, a police station, um, a water tank, you know, whatever it is, you know, you're talking usually, you know, ten to thirty years for most of those things. And then you have what's called a capital exclusion, right? So that might be a two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar dump truck that we're just gonna have a one-time increase and buy it this year. So but they're all under the Prop Two-and-a-Half law. And as soon as people hear Prop Two-and-a-Half, despite how many times you might spend on the different things, they go into complete panic, that's permanent. But of those three, the only one that's permanent is the straight Prop Two-and-a-Half override that has to do with just money flow.
Okay.
Everything else is only for the duration of the project.
And for the project, it's it's not spending anything else.
Yeah, it all goes to the project, right.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So that's that's kinda, like I said, you say the words Prop Two-and-a-Half, people go into panic mode.
Right, right. Cause I think there's just a lack of um educational knowledge out there for the laypeople that, you know, I mean, everybody knows this past year's been really hard. There's been like a ten percent in in cost of living, everything. I mean, everything with little add-ons tacked on everywhere, trash pickup, oil deliveries now, track on, attack on a hazmat fee, attack on an insurance fee.
Car insurance, homeowners insurance.
Everything has gone up, except the average non-union person's pay.
Yeah.
Pay.
Yep.
And to be able to, in this small town, have eighty percent of the municipal budget, seventy-two to eighty percent of the municipal budget going to the schools and then fight for bigger projects like that. It really, it's not, I don't think it's the majority of taxpayers who do not want to provide for our public. I think we would all love that, but I think the problem is, is trying to afford it all on top of mounting costs every year, where this town has not a lot of commercial uh tax input. So it falls on the backs of the taxpayers and we're not averse to the building up and making everything great. It's just that the fact that the average person is struggling to afford their own bills, let alone think of all the Christmas presents that, you know, we would love to have that we can't afford, so.
But for that very reason, you're also describing what we face every year in terms of the town.
Mm-hmm.
Because the the need doesn't go away.
Right.
And the buildings only get older and need more repair. And each year, it would cost you more to to have built a built a building. And these are all things that I remember ten years ago when we were trying to get the building then. What we had put in for that at that time would be laughable today. So it's 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 an awful situation.
No, it's almost half the cost if we had done it originally.
Oh, yeah, it's two X.
By now.
Yeah.
Easily, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's and it's the same thing with the roads and everything else. The dam has been kicked down the road so long that now we are all up against the walls. We all want our roads fixed, we all want the new buildings, we all want everything to be fixed somehow magically, but there's no money.
Right.
There's not no money, but there's not a lot of money to try to figure out how to do it.
Right.
So it is very much piecemeal. And if you're on a road that's on the list, that's three, four years down the road, your car is getting like catastrophic damage or driving over the potholes that you can lose an SUV on. You know, it's, this is the reality that we are all in and we as a board are literally trying to fix this.
Right.
But there's not, there's only so much we can do. That's why we have these kinds of meetings and we try to put good projects forward and like, let's talk about this, but the reality is, is like you said, we have to pay for it.
Right.
And it will come out of taxes somehow, right?
And I I just wanna add to that is, I mean, people wanna see something for what they pay in taxes. And like me, I'm all about what am I getting back for my taxes? We don't, this town does not have a lot to offer for what you pay in your taxes because the school takes up so much of it. And that's one of the issues also. I have no problem paying higher taxes for a public safety building. You know what I mean? Cause you're getting something back. And that's that's all I wanted to add. Just when you when you're a homeowner and you're paying this tax, you want like, we don't have trash, we don't have water, we don't have sewer. You know, we're the next town over, you can get everything.
Right.
And pay that higher tax rate every, you know, per thousand. But you're getting something back.
Right.
And that's, we don't have that to offer. We don't have the infrastructure.
I'm curious of the folks assembled here, how many of you would be supportive of a Prop Two-and-a-Half debt exclusion? Understand the difference now, right? For a public safety building. Would you support it? Raise your hand if you would support it.
Depends on how much.
Fifteen fifteen million.
So your calculation is the average taxpayer.
How would that choose, how would that choose out?
I'd have to do the math. I have a I have a spreadsheet.
One of my questions and my big adversities on the last one that we did was that the senior center was the thing that was gonna be built first. And everybody agrees that we need public safety and town offices over a senior center. So I think that's a major reason why it tanked the first time, but it, there's a lot more than just the cost um factor that people wanna see. And like he said, they want more bang for their buck. Their buck stops with the public safety and the no, we, senior center last on the list. It was everybody I talked to.
I think, yeah, and what we're talking about here is the public safety building. Which we're probably, so many. Fire and police.
Yeah.
Right, fire, police and fire, probably come in. Uh, cause the last go around with seven million is it's probably fifteen million now.
Yeah, I think we go between fifteen and nineteen, what we're guessing.
So, yeah, so ballpark, do you have your little your little sandbox to figure out what that might be?
I think last time, wasn't it like four hundred a year?
I wanna say that, yeah.
For the, that was for a house valued at two hundred and fifty thousand back then.
For the average. Oh.
That's right.
So it's gonna be more.
That's right.
So I don't know what it would equal out to now.
Cause last year, the average house was what, three something?
My math came up to approximately twenty per million to the average household, but I don't want to say that as fact on record.
No, but we're just, but we're just doing that, we're just spitballing here to to just give a, get a kind of a consensus here
consensus.
as to what that would look like.
If it was health safety first and it was and it wasn't, grandiose Taj Mahal, I would say the majority of people would probably go for that. But whether they.
Well, I'm interested in this sample, but I'm interested in this sample size. I don't know about anybody else in here, so.
Could we have a show of hands again so I could count? Who would be in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, is that it?
And that is something we're looking forward to doing.
It would just squeak on this sample size.
Yeah.
It would just squeak.
That doesn't, no, that's, I don't, I would not put this sample towards.
There we are, no, my sample of twelve.
Yes, I would not put my sample.
But I'm, but I'm, but that, but it interests me.
And if and when, more likely, when we do move forward with that, there will be data available on our website that will help you, I'll put some some infographic, like send that kinda stuff out, so you will be able to input what your house is worth and your tax variables, so it will tell you approximately, that is, it's what everyone is doing at this point when they're going out, because you need that information to be available.
Yeah, because people have to be able to afford to live. It's nice to be able to do that, but with everything else you're paying.
The other thing too is, even if they, even if we started right now, there's no way we would be breaking ground in the next few years on this. You have to, you have to come up with engineer plans and you have to come up with money to do those, like, this is a long term.
Didn't they do that all before?
No, we had some fancy.
Didn't get that far.
Yeah, some fancy drawings.
We had plans, we had plans to draw, yes.
Oh, okay.
No.
We had.
No, that was for the, that was for the senior center. We never had. Yes, not of the, not of the public safety. There was a fifty thousand dollar study for the police and fire. I don't even, and that was, I, several years ago and that probably isn't any good.
The engineering plans, I was, during my last professional position, I was in Princeton, who was going through the, a very, very, very similar issue and they're having very similar results. Just getting the plans and the site review was approximately seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And that was two years ago, so now, how would it be? We would be in a much better position.
I'm a complainer about the future salaries, the engineers are getting rich.
We would be in a much better position to seek grant funding if we did have those shovel-ready plans. And which is the first step of it.
Right.
Which tonight I am proposing.
First to have some skin in the game in order to get these grants, which is can't show up with a handout.
Yep, all right. Ma'am, you had your hand up first and then you were served.
Rosemary Southwick Williamsville Road, I just, because I've lived here too long, I'm an implant, I didn't, I wasn't born here. In the seventies, we tried to buy the pallet shop for seventy-nine thousand dollars. And it did not go through. That was for the highway barn and the fire station, and it didn't go through. So I've been hearing this fifty years. And it it's not that. I think we have to keep things simple. Don't make Hubbardston a Rutland or a Holden Fire Department. Make it a Ware Fire Department. You know, a good, solid building, but not this great, grand kitchen and.
We don't need, you don't need brick and foyers. Listen, I love steel buildings. I'd love to see a, I'd love to see a steel building.
Ware has a brick building.
You're not the first person I've heard that from.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You don't, I mean, you haven't crossed the ley of brick today.
But also, if I can jump in on that, because this is one of the things that has changed from ten years ago.
And I'm just saying that that the.
And Fire Chief has made it clear to us in terms of that, that's the regu, the laws, the state laws.
I understand the laws.
You have to have certain things to have a fire station.
Yeah.
By law. And it's not, it's not a luxury, one of those things. You have to have.
Right.
And that all adds to to the price.
I understand the law, but I understand Hubbardston being a simple town.
Oh, yeah.
They come here to, out of the cities, because they don't like the confusion.
Right.
So that's all I'm saying, in history, since seventies. You're not gonna, you know, you didn't get it. You didn't get a lot of things.
Even since the beginning of New England, it was always the simplest and the most sturdy, you know, for your, for your money.
Well, a good, a good investment, a good investment is what you have to sell.
No pretenses.
I think you ladies should be on the committee to uh to uh to select the the plans and the architects. That's right.
Certainly.
I think, I think two good choices right there. Sign you up. Don't scare him away.
Thank you, sir.
Regulations.
Jonathan Braker Three, Rowan Woods Road, um, so recently, we had our um annual, or not annual, um, townwide property value assessment done. And we got walloped by that pretty hard. How does that factor into all of this when we're talking rough numbers, budget? How does it factor into um what we're looking for for for, you know, a new building, uh, yeah, increase on um the school district? What they're asking for?
It would definitely go up, but whereas the two-and-a-half percent that were allowed by statute to increase, but then everything else goes up, when the school is asking for half a million dollars over last year and this is a rough number, I'm not looking at it, and the whole amount of new growth with everything considered is three hundred and some change, there's your problem. And yes, like if the values did go up, the tax rate went down ever so slightly to try to open it out.
Because we just did it, yeah.
Yeah. It is going to be reappraised in five, in four years now, since it was last year?
I was just asking about that, cause in terms of what you're asking, because it does have an effect. Uh, every five years, you have to do the reassessment.
Reappraisal.
Reapraisals, thank you. And we got hurt by it in the sense of when we did ours, it was a hundred, we did it a hundred percent and the other towns hadn't gotten around to doing it yet. That only made us look even
Better.
Better and richer, okay? So we got hit real hard.
Cause all five towns aren't on the same cycle.
Right.
Which kinda hoses whoever's cycle is up that year.
And that happens, so, so to your point, yes, it does.
But that pits us, and that's the sad part, is it pits us against our neighbors. You know what I mean? Like, and it makes it, well, we got a great assessment this year, let's roll with it. And the other town is like crying, cause they can't even balance their budget.
Right.
Yet the next year, we're nailed and they're like, oh, well, ours is great, bye.
We're nailed every year.
You know, it's, it does, it it really does kinda kink the works. For a while there, the the selector was trying to see Hubbardston went down. Yeah, to try to get it to align. But then like COVID killed everything and along with speaking with all the others, the towns, and trying to all work together on this.
And of course, one of the things that we have to deal with every single year, I mean, we're we're all in the same boat and that by our property values, we can, we are considered a wealthy town, are well off, okay? But our property, our taxes basically is almost ninety percent of our revenue, because we have, don't have businesses. Every year, things go up. Every year, the school department goes up. But we're not going up because we're not getting businesses in town, et cetera, and so forth. Every year, things go up, every year, the school department goes up, but we're not going up, because we're not getting businesses in town, et cetera, and so forth. People don't want their taxes to go up, but it's costly more to run the town, but, so it, this is everything we're facing every single year. And, and we're, we're taxpayers the same as you guys are too, so, but this is what we have to deal with, being in Hubbardston.
Alora Hale Road, um, is the major problem that, the reason why we can't get a commercial in here, is the major problem, the fact that we have no public water and sewer?
That's one of the, yes.
Yes, well, one of them, yeah. We have a, we have a lot of reasons.
Yes.
Yeah, for the type of, for the type of businesses that you would want, yeah, right.
Right.
Those are the two biggest things.
Our commercial, our commercial area is, see that map over there?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's sad.
Yeah.
The old Indian park.
Yeah, but then also, we have a lot of, of our, and Chris can speak to this if you'd like, head of the planning board. Um, we have a lot of bylaws that are kind of weird.
Intermittent, yeah.
And not necessarily business friendly, but between all these things, yeah, people don't want big box here, we want,
Intermittent.
Right.
You know, I'm, I'm a townie, I'm one of the few townies that probably actually sit on boards and committees. And we don't want, you know, Walmart or anything, but they're not coming here anyway, cause we don't have sewer and water.
Right.
I see, and along with some of the other people that sit on these boards and committees, like Chris, and the economic development, and, you know, a lot of our planning board and stuff, we're starting to see, let's go ecotourism and agrotourism. Let's grab our open space and our farms and see what we can do with them. And try to encourage growth that way, cause that's what we have. That's the only way to grow, but we have to get some rules on the books, which we are currently working on uh, through planning and through the um, uh, EDC and things like that, we're, we're currently working on these things. Trying to fix some of our bylaws and get some bylaws on the books that would help our farmers and some of these businesses hopefully grow. But again, none of this is a lo, none of this is short term, this is all long-term fixes.
Right. Isn't, uh, I had heard somewhere that Hubbardston has the largest land area for a town, but is something like forty percent MDC?
State land, yeah.
Yeah, we have a lot of this.
Funny, you know, I've been reading my mind, cause I've just thinking about that, we have, yes, we have a large amount, a large percentage of land that's state-owned, we don't get a dime.
Yes.
Yeah, cause I.
Excuse me.
Did it more than.
Is it?
Well, we get, no, we get money, just not as much as you would if the house was owned, or, you know, it was privately owned.
No, it's not.
As you would if it was a red land.
Yeah, right. Right.
Is it forty percent? Do you know what the percentage of everything in Hubbardston is?
What's Christopher's percentage is?
Christopher's percentage is.
Forty-three percent is owned by, uh, Christopher Monroe, uh, Grimes Road, Chair of the Planning Board. I'm gonna try to remember the numbers off the top of my head here, I believe it's forty-three percent is owned by the state. Forty-seven percent is otherwise protected for wellhead supply or aquifer protection. And then there is two percent of the town that is left for development without constraints, and that two percent is almost entirely focused in the sand pits.
Oh, really?
What'd you say was?
The sand pits.
It's almost entirely focused in the sand pits.
Yeah, oh, yeah, right.
Yeah. Sorry. Yeah, there's, there's a lot of agencies that have a strong hold on us.
Right.
So in an attempt to kinda reel this back in, outside of the major squeaky wheels, are, is there anyone that came this evening with any input on the proposed budget? It includes a two percent COLA for most non-union employees, a two percent COLA for the union employees, a restructure of the land use department, to attempt to bring on a part-time town planner, in an attempt to go and seek those efforts. And we are fortunate to have an educated professional in that field, living in the town, willing to do that, cause he is approaching his retirement years. Some other proponents of the proposal are a seven percent uh, increase for the highway department regular employees, so not their superintendent, which we would have to go and speak to the union about. The highway superintendent who is here can speak to the fact that he's having an incredibly difficult time retaining and finding employees to come and do this painstaking labor for the wages that we're seeking them to do it. And you're also required to have certain licensure, and you can get paid a lot better in the private sector for doing that. We will not likely be able to compete with the private sector, but if we can be even close to competitive, someone may be interested in doing it. I remember years ago, people would take these type of jobs and retire from, just cause benefits were good and the pension was okay. So there are people that would be interested, but not at nineteen dollars an hour. Some of the other increases throughout the budget are service increases, such as the fact that the police department, their TASER contract changed. It's not necessarily something that we have much of a option on. The old contract was different than the new contract, and the new contract handles a lot of the bits and pieces that the old contract didn't have. So where we used to have to purchase the parts and different things, now it all comes in the contract. There, as I was stating at the very beginning, there's not a whole bunch of facts that you could possibly cut from this budget. The one part of the proposal that is maybe a question that could be changed by opinion of the select board and the finance committee outside of that the fact that they could change it all, is that there is a large amount, almost a hundred and sixty thousand dollars of annual debt payments expiring this year. In my proposal, I leave fifty thousand dollars in the debt line to potentially go after a large-scale capital item, such as a fire truck in FY twenty-four for FY twenty-five, and this year, make an extra payment of fifty thousand dollars towards our ambulance that we've been paying down and are set to pay off in five or six years, I don't have the number in front of me. So, and we would, we use the rest of that hundred and sixty to fall into the operating budget, making it slightly less of a hard hit from the, from the school this year. But that really is the part of the budget that is kind of, it's the only part that's making anything, it's the biggest variable, so it gets incredibly challenging when that is, when they're going from thirteen point two percent to nine point two percent, that's not our final number. And when we ask, I kind of had a little joke going with Katie, cause I was like, no, it's gonna be six, seven, she was double digits.
Yeah.
And, and, no, no.
I said, they're gonna come down, they're gonna finalize between eight and nine, and right now, they're at nine point two, and the money is between eight and nine.
What was the, what was the main driver for the, uh, for the reduction, for the school?
That the numbers in the house version of the state budget in chapter seventy came.
Transportation.
It was entirely that?
The transportation numbers are higher.
That was the driver? That was the, was the budget driver?
They have not begun to cut. They would only begin to cut their budget if it failed in certain communities.
Right, right, well, that's what I'm trying to understand, so it was a revenue, they, it was more revenue, there was no cuts, that's what I'm trying to sort out.
Do you?
Yeah.
Yes, oh, yeah.
It was a hundred percent based on revenue.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, when we did that original meeting with the school, uh, committee.
You asked them to go four percent?
Yeah, we had gone over a couple things. One of the things they were supposed to produce that I had asked about was what cuts would look like, what those numbers would be, and they were supposed to work on something, and I don't think it came. The second thing I was curious about is the state representative from Desi was talking about how there was a push to fund regional transportation at, around a hundred percent, and he was still funding it in the initial cherry sheet at a lower percentage. So that being case, we knew the number was gonna go up. And I know when they promoted the house version of the budget when it came out last week or so, they did hammer home the fact that they were funding regional transportation, I think pretty close to a hundred percent. But I don't know what Hubbardston, or what um, Quabin's increase was, but I know in a district double the size, it was a million dollar increase for regional transportation, so I imagine it was close to five hundred thousand, cause it's about fifty percent of the budget.
Well, what.
Well, a, a four percent drop for, for us, that's, that's big money, so they, they got a chunk of change, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and up on the screen and within the proposed budget, you, I did break down what different percentage budget, uh, percentage increases over last year would mean in terms of their grand total and in terms of increase, going from one percent increase at fifty-four thousand two hundred and forty-nine
Yeah. Yeah.
To what a fifteen percent increase would look like at a whopping eight hundred and thirteen, seven hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars.
Yeah. No.
A nine point, a nine percent increase is showing at four eighty-eight, two four four, at nine point zero two, it was a just under four forty-nine, I wanna say.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, cause that's six percent, so it was uh, four eight nine in that budget.
Okay.
And within my proposal, I am at this time, holding steady at six.
Mm-hmm.
And we'll see what the town meeting floor, or the select board, or the finance committee has to say in terms of changing that.
So Nate, would you be able?
So let's say.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I was just gonna ask you if you could bring up the whole, the detail budget piece, and if we could just go down. I have a few questions, I imagine other folks around the table might have a few.
Yeah.
Yes.
Just to make sure everyone understands what we're looking at.
Right, but the delta, all I was gonna say is the delta then between the six, six percent and the, and the nine
Nine.
is about three hundred, about, no, three percent, about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
So we would have to, so we would have to come up with another hundred and fifty thousand dollars in cuts to balance the budget at a nine percent, nine and change or whatever it is.
Yeah. Yeah, the way I would.
It's like a fifty, it's fifty thousand per percent, right?
It's about fifty, fifty-four, what, what, fifty-four, fifty-five thousand per percent.
The way I was doing it in my, the way I was doing it in what I called my doomsday proposal was using all the rest of the free cash to fit the fifty thousand dollars from the debt line
Yeah. Yeah.
And taking fifty out of reserves, cause we're at a point where there is not much left to cut.
Yeah.
I asked them, the department heads to cut from their lines that they cut ninety thousand dollars from a year ago.
Yeah, yeah.
If, at this point, it would, it would either need to be money such as that, or services, or personnel.
Mm-hmm.
Right, so we're, so, so it's a rainy day, and we're into the rainy day funds.
Yep.
Go.
Go.
So you were saying that, that they're at nine point, whatever, zero two percent increase, but that they haven't made any cuts?
Zero.
Something.
No.
No.
No, it doesn't.
So.
They don't cut.
They got extra money back from the state.
I would say on the record on camera, they better come back with a fat trim.
No, they don't cut.
They won't cut.
They don't get rid of positions.
They got extra money from the state?
Yeah.
Well, it's not extra money.
It's an increase in the revenue, so therefore, it's a decrease in their total assessment.
It's a different fund, so.
Right.
And it disappears.
So, we have town side, right, we get what's called the cherry sheet, so we get unrestricted governmental aid, we get money for properties and chapter, uh, non-chapter, that the state has, right, we get the veterans exemption piece and the public libraries, and then we get charges. On the school side, they get money for chapter seventy, as well as some other things, including regional transportation. Regional transportation has been a huge one, cause when it first came out, they were supposed to always commit to a hundred percent funding. And you know, over time, that number seemed to drop down more and more, but this year, they're supposed to be committing on the state level to closer to that hundred percent regional funding. So the funding estimate on the uh, the school version of their cherry sheet, right, from the governor's budget to the house budget has increased, because they have funded it at a higher percentage than what the governor's proposal was. And as a result, they have updated, the school has updated their assessments to reflect the increase in revenue, and therefore, the decrease in assessments.
They got the money from the, got the money from the state instead of us.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right, so that should decrease.
It did, and when it brought our excessively high.
It did.
It did.
It brought it down.
So it's.
We were at fourteen.
Ins, absurdly high.
Yeah, we were at fourteen percent.
Yeah.
Fourteen percent to nine percent.
The school.
Yeah.
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 They came down to nine point two.
Yeah.
Uh, nine point two.
I know, they say the same words every year.
So the school is saying, well, we were fourteen, now we're giving you.
How do you like us now?
Exactly, right.
That's right.
And why is it that they won't make cuts?
These are great questions, and they have school committee meetings that agree to.
I mean, I, my, my question was just because I didn't know if there were like, other laws behind the scenes that says that they cannot make cuts
Oh, Cohen.
once they put new positions, if they can't get rid of them.
Cohen watched the meeting, when was that, January?
Yeah.
I went to a meeting in the school, Heather, Katie, myself.
Well, their, their public hearing was in March.
In March, and I was speaking, and you can visibly see them rolling their eyes. They.
It was a Tuesday. Well, you were, you were, in their defense, you were rather lengthy, so I would roll, I was rolling my eyes too, just couldn't see.
All right, everybody settle down. All right, so back to this piece here.
But it was good stuff, though.
Nate, can you blow it up, so it's full screen, so folks in the audience who don't have a copy of this can at least follow along?
I can sure try.
Uh, if we can get rid of the sidebar.
Move the sidebar.
Yeah, the double, triple lines or quadruple lines on the left-hand side will usually do it.
Present.
Oh, that, uh, that's a little better. Yeah, okay. So my first question is actually on the second page under FinCom. So, just for FinCom, it looks like we're dropping the reserve from thirty to twenty-five, are you guys good with that? Exact, how much have we used, how much have we used this year thus far, to date?
Trying to do my part.
How much did we ask for, or how much did we use?
Now, how much have we spent?
How much have we expended of the current thirty thousand dollar budget of reserves?
Or is it fifteen, two?
You have some things in the hopper that you haven't asked us for, yeah.
Yeah, we have, yeah.
But yeah, there's stuff on the.
Yeah, there are some things in the hopper, the VHB payment, we went to them already, and they paid s, two of the legal bills out of the select board expense line.
So I'm just, my only concern, right, is when you have such a tight budget year, and we have tight budget years every year, but when we're asking departments to come so close to the wire, it makes me really nervous to trim down FinCom reserve. I'd rather have money in FinCom reserve than the extra money in the debt payment. You're talking five grand?
That'll be the year.
But even, five grands, five grands, you know.
Yeah, but, yeah, but, but, but the, the, you can still get it paid for with the, at, at town, at town meeting at the end of the day, right? You'd have to have it appropriated.
Well, I mean, the good news is we do insane bottom line, uh, de, uh, it's not even department, bottom line governmental sectors, we'll call it. General government and public safety, um, so theoretically, we can move money around if we need to, but I'm just worried that there's not enough money there to move around. Should you need to move money around in the general government sector, or if some other section needs the money, you're not gonna be able to pull it. I guess my comfort.
I don't disagree, like, that's, setting this up was, I had a number, and I went through and was picking at different things and.
I hear you.
The question is, if you wanna put it back up, Heather, where would you take it from?
I would take it from the extra payment in the debt. I would drop that down to forty-five and put this at thirty thou. Going into a year, again, just like this one, where you have so many unknowns and you're already so tightly budgeting, I would wanna make sure that there's enough money there to at least get us through some minor, major catastrophe that does not trigger a town meeting.
Where are?
Cause town meetings cost what, between two and four thousand minimum to the general?
Yeah, the um, with, with the backlog then, where are we in terms of the FinCom reserve for this year?
Zero.
That's right, we spent, your, your ask was, we'll end up spending it all.
Our ask. Yeah, our ask was all of the thirty thousand dollars.
Right, right.
So I would get the number to thirty, if not high, I, I mean, I, I understand the idea of having that money for that debt payment, but I'd rather have it available if we need it.
I'm not.
So that we don't go into crazy.
I'm not against it, and let me look around and crunch some numbers, cause we may even be able to do it without taking from that fifty thousand.
But I would try to get that reserve number, you know, I'd look at past five years, what our track record is on the number we've used in the reserve funds. Think this is an even tougher year, and add a little bit more on top of the average number, just to make sure that we get ourselves through.
My other second question on that would be, what's the interest on the debt we don't pay? You know what I mean?
Mm-hmm.
Would it offset that?
Well, I think our plan was already to not pay, right? That fifty thousand is just a bonus, it's like an extra mortgage payment.
Yeah. Yeah, the fifty thousand is a bonus, so we won't.
Sure, but I'm just saying, are we saving more money by, you know, you know what I mean? It's like, where, where does that stand, that's all I'm asking.
Well, we financed the number years ago, so I imagine the interest rate's not bad.
It's all principal.
It's all principal.
It's all, it's all principal now, oh.
Kelly, do you have an answer to that question?
So why?
So there's no reason to pay it.
We make it an extra dip payment, and we need to scoop oil.
Kelly, you're on mute.
In order to use, to use that fifty thousand dollars towards a capital item next year.
Something else. Something true.
Okay. This one.
Yeah.
So Kelly, that fifty thousand dollars, if we weren't to use it as an additional payment, is there any cost to us, or it's just, to Nate's point, it would just be then available for the following year? is there any cost to us, or it's just, to Nate's point, it would just be then available for the following year for something else?
Um, the payment is, for both of the debt payments is paid in full this fiscal year, so there, there technically isn't a debt payment due. Um, I believe we were putting that in there so that we could have a, like, a down payment on potentially leasing, um, was it a fire truck?
Yeah.
Um, or something like that, um, in this fiscal year. Um, and the concern is, is that we, with taking out, um, the money that's already been put toward the debt for these years leading up to this, is that if we take that money out of the budget right now, then that's gonna then hamper us in getting more debt for, you know, other, other pieces of equipment that we would need in the future.
And it goes away forever. Whatever we take out of that, a hundred and sixty, a hundred and fifty, goes away forever, unless we find another means, uh, making another payment on something to keep it alive. And then it'll come back as fifty thousand dollars next year, that we can use moving forward in perpetuity, until such time as it to expires and pays for itself. Heather, I will look into that.
Okay, but I, I, I just wanna make sure we're prepared and we're good seeing in that.
I'm not, I'm not against it, that-
Um, a question on the assessors one, so the assistant, we went from twenty thousand to ten thousand from our proposal to our modified? Are we in that?
I cut that, so you do have the, it went back to ten thousand when I got the most recent school assessment. Cuz the twenty thousand, I was going to seek assistance within the office of the administrator in procurement and grant administrative work, because we do have a hard time filling the ten-hour-a-week administrative assessor position.
Yeah.
But when I got that nine point zero-two percent number, I went and re-rolled the budget.
You threw up a little in your mouth, didn't you?
That's fine.
Yeah, so I, I removed that request.
Employees support, so this is under police, so what is that? Two, two-ten? Cost center?
I have more windows open.
Uh, yeah, I hear ya. All right, another page, another page.
There you go.
All right, down a little further, there you go. All right, so on that new page, the employees support, second line down, police education, so we dropped it from the requested fourteen, eight to six-four.
Because we hired an internal candidate to be the chief, and he was one of the heavy hitters in the police education line.
Okay, so police education here, we're not talking training, we're talking educational incentive, or Quinnville, or whatever variation we call it.
Not stipend, uh, the- Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, sorry, I wasn't sure what that was. Uh, stipends and allowances, we also dropped?
Same.
Okay, so all related to police chief?
All related to the hiring of Sergeant Kuchar as Chief Kuchar.
Uh, two thirty-one, so the ambulance. Next page?
Yeah.
Okay, so we have, I'm just trying to understand, so first, under services, we have ambulance pro service, and then we, under supplies, we have ambulance pro service? What's ambulance pro service?
Professional services.
Oh, just ambulance professional, so we have it under services and supplies?
Yeah. I'm sure it's different things. I would have to ask Chief Hayes, I didn't question that because it's an ambulance, and he was level funding a majority of it.
Right. Okay. So I'm guessing the ambulance professional services, then, if that's not a company, is probably our billing? Cost for our billing soft, billing software, whether we use Coastal or whatever it may be?
Likely. I will get you the answer to that.
Okay, and then, so under supplies, it says medical supplies, and then under other, it says medical supplies. I was just confused.
Let me open the explanation.
I don't know. And it said new, which I liked, but it seemed to be there last year, so I don't, I don't know. Do you know what that is, Kelly, by any chance?
Carolyn Murray, if you want to not be on here, that would be cool too, and we can call you back, cuz I'm sure you have many important attorney things to do. If you want to come back at, say, eight fifteen, this budget hearing went a lot longer than originally planned, and that was with the most respect. Carolyn Murray is our legal counsel.
Yeah.
They figured as much when your father-in-law attorney, thanks.
I'll call Boris.
If you can't pull it up right away, Nate, that's fine, you'll always find the answer, I'm just-
Goals, organizational charge, buzz, budget decreased.
So both of them are level funded from last year.
No, no, he did not explain that, I will get you that answer.
Okay, and, um, Kelly, you don't know what those are from billings and stuff submitted, the distinctions been made?
Um, I don't, no.
Okay. All right, um, my next question, land use. So we had originally hired, I think, the two people, right? So we have, uh, Mark, and then we have the woman who, Nancy, right? So are they both under personnel, under land use, or are they now in separate homes? So it says land use, two forty-one, personnel, and then it says staff.
That eighty-eight, nine-ten is Duffy, the building inspector, Nancy Perrin, the licensed clerk, and Mark Cressage.
Kreske, Kreske.
We've been through this, it's Cressage.
Kreske.
Nope.
I'm gonna ask, that's how I see him.
We're, we're there, ask, ask Chris, we're, we're there, I'm dead, I'm dead to rights.
Okay, so that is, that is three humans, that is not one that's on two, but it's all three.
That is three human beings, yes.
All right, and the land use department now currently consists of?
Those same three humans and ten hours that were previously being done by executive assistant Tony Walker, who did, had recently re- changed her schedule, and I repurposed them in next year's budget to be used to incentivize Mr. Cressage to be the assist, the town planner on a part-time basis.
Okay, so the amount for this is only two thousand more from last year.
Mm-hmm.
Were we utilizing all of that eighty-six thousand, or did we end up utilizing substantially less because Duffy is less hours than what we had initially intended?
It, it wouldn't be substantial, but I'd say it came due to turnover. Turnover from Mallory to Mark, turnover from Mallory to Nancy, turno- like, Tony's hours over there. That's, that's where the additional monies came from this year, and there likely will be a small amount rolling over into free cash as well.
Okay, so when we say land use, our department covers building, border health, concom, and planning?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions while we're there, Madam Chair, on the land use budget improvements, your staff?
It's staffing issues, yeah.
Nope.
That's all I had.
All of the new employees, in my opinion, in the full time dealing with them, have been doing a wonderful job.
I was just trying to figure out what staff was.
Yeah.
Cuz other, I noticed in other departments, it often said, you know, what the position was. Um, and I didn't, like, town clerk salary, or custodian.
There are-
Police chief, police wages, police assistants, but it didn't, it didn't spell out, maybe, I don't know if it would be advantageous, but for sake of transparency.
It spells it out, I can show you. In the public budget file that I have linked to the budget, which does a deep dive, it spells it out there.
Okay.
So FY twenty-four would be forty thousand eight hundred dollars for the building commissioner, twenty-six thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars for the part-time planner, and twenty-one thousand four hundred and thirty-four dollars for the inspections clerk.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yeah.
I have no further questions.
All right, Your Honor.
Anyone else have any further questions, uh, as far as on the, on the budget? We can, we also wanted, go ahead, yes?
Uh, Tom Halli, thirty-five, Mount Jefferson Road. One thing I feel would be helpful would be to see columns with the FY twenty-two actual, FY twenty-three year-to-date, and FY twenty-three fourth quarter projected, something like that. Um, so, so questions like the, uh, the, the medical supplies in two different lines. Was it new last year that we added that extra seventy-five hundred, and how much did we spend and that sort of thing?
I have all that.
So, good. Knowing, knowing what we budgeted last year is very helpful, but knowing what we actually spent last year might also be instructive.
I have no problem against it, a lot of it was due to the amount of space on one pa- one piece of paper.
Yep.
Like, so, but I can, yeah, it's available, it's out there, I can make it even more available.
Yep. I mean, even if it's a separate document.
Yeah.
We could refer to it.
Uh, and I'm putting out the quarter three financials on Monday, so that will come out with tables and a just a kind of an update on where we are with all of that stuff.
Thank you. Could the ambulance thing be, cuz there's two ambulances, one for one and one for the other?
Possibly, I'll have to get back to, I don't know what pro service is.
This question came up before, in my fuzzy recollection, was that it was the type of supply
Okay.
that got, it got broken out differently, yeah.
Yeah, Chief did bring it up.
I mean, it was like two grand, I didn't care then, and I don't care now.
Yeah.
Anyone else have anything before we move to the, uh, town meeting warrant? Nate, you wanna deal with that?
All right, uh, thank you all for your attendance of the public hearing this evening, I think it was a very valuable conversation. To those at home, thank you for, for writing, Mike Foley, thank you for writing to us. Um, I will be reviewing the town warrant quickly, cuz I have twenty-two percent battery remaining.
So, can I just pry it, are you guys leaving? Is there anybody interested in the public safety building committee? Out of y'all that I had? You would be, you would be, okay.
If you guys are, if you wanna hang out, um, we should be getting to that, I'd imagine, probably in ten minutes or less.
Yeah.
To just talk about that, that might be a good opportunity to hear some more information on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, the rest, it won't be long at all.
Yeah, no, we can fly right through the rest.
That being said, we have a really exciting agenda, if people wanna stick around, you're most welcome to, cuz we're gonna go over the warrant next, and that's, that's just like riveting.
The warrant is riveting. So, this is the warrant, it's a-
It's a while, it is though. I am, that's just the history of the votes.
It's an incredibly important piece of documentation, which is available on our town website. If anyone has any questions or proposed changes of the sort, please feel free to reach out to my email, which is on the same page as the draft warrant. The article one is to choose the officers, these are all essentially consent items that are done every single year. The moderator goes through them relatively quickly. Article one is that, article two is to hear the reports of the town officers and committees enact thereof. That is usually waived in an effort to not make everyone in the town sit and listen to the moderator read, like, the document. I'm going to skip all of the consent ones.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, good.
Just go to the ones that are good.
So, hold on, article six, though, I don't wanna skip.
Article six sets the spending limits for the revolving funds for the whole year. Madam Chair, that's what we were talking about in the email the other day, where the septic fund would be set at town meeting. That's something we should contemplate increasing if the increase is necessary.
So, are there any other changes you're proposing in this, if these are the same spending limits we had last year?
These are the same spending limits that we had last year, because no one has increased, has requested an increase.
Right. Okay, and Kelly, we're all, we're within all those numbers currently for our spending limit, and we don't look like we're gonna get close to or exceed any of those for this year? She's still there. Kelly?
Yeah, I don't think, um, I don't think we will this year. Um, you know, we're still working on, you know, I'm trying to work on the back stuff to figure out, Nancy's been, uh, helping a lot with looking through the office to figure out some documents that hopefully we can tie out, um, the prior years.
Okay. Excellent, thank you.
On this?
Yeah.
Oh, nice.
This is a Chromebook, it's a piece of crap. Sorry. It's something I'm, I apologize.
So that's just the general budget?
Yeah, article seven is the general budget outside of the school. Article eight is money tech at forty, four hundred and forty-seven thousand four hundred and eleven. Anyone ask questions on that, you can see the breakdown within the budget. Article nine is the Quavon Regional School District.
At six percent, at our number.
At our number, at six percent, which is the number we're moving forward with.
Yeah.
Article ten is to see if the town will vote to raise and appropriate or transfer available funds to pay, oh, that's Quavon debt.
Yeah, that's, isn't that for the roof or for something?
Yeah, that's for-
Yep. Yeah.
So, and article eleven is the salaries, benefits, stipends, and otherwise of the, the
Cable access.
public access cable. We did have to increase that, but I will be finalizing a number with the director in the next couple of weeks, because we did use all of it and go under both last year and this year, so we want to rectify that situation.
So just to be clear, that's not town funds? What that is, is money that comes from charter?
No. Yes.
Or, you know, charter bills, is a combination of the two, between capital and regular?
Yeah, that- Yeah, peg access money was set up when the cable institution came to town. They pay it quarterly, and much like the other revolving funds, it's set on a yearly basis, just so, to prevent overspending and overuse, et cetera.
And the only, just to make sure everyone's clear, the only purpose and the only use of peg access funds is for cable-related work. You can't buy a police car out of it, it's not like spare money in a couch cushion.
Anyone with cable and internet is paying for that too, you can break it, you can see the breakdown on the back of your bill.
Right.
It's a small fee, but when you get it from everybody, it adds up. The next is the capital line items, grand totaling three hundred and ninety thousand dollars. A addition, additional roadway repair of one hundred thousand dollars. Ma'am, that was talking about the roads earlier, this is a commitment the select board and the town have been making for a number of years now to show dedication on top of chapter ninety. Many communities don't take this type of initiative, a lot do, but some, some don't. The DPW garage roof repair was funded in fifty thousand dollars from State Senator Ann Goby's receipt of that money in the budget last year. Will need approximately eighty-five thousand dollars to get to complete funding. The DPW, yes, ma'am?
Quick question, I didn't know if Hubbardson does this, does the town budget annually to pay into the county retirement for each employee, so that's in the budget?
Yeah, and it's, and it went up thirty-three percent this year.
Yeah, it's under, uh, the cost center nine-eleven, it's called Worcester Regional Retirement.
Oh, okay, thank you.
The DP-
The DP, DP.
I don't know, I muted it, you asked me to sign it.
I did, I did, I did.
Nate?
Yes?
Yes.
Candace wanted me to let you know that she, uh, needs to get off and, and, um, leave the meeting, and she apologizes.
All right, this is much longer than we anticipated.
I don't know how to turn this off, for the love of God. Sorry.
Sorry.
I know, I'm kidding.
Sorry.
You like the longer than mine.
You just extended.
Tony, can you mute, can you mute Katie? This is what I get for trying to help people.
Quiet.
The DPW Director Vehicle.
Give it, feel free.
It's fifty-five thousand dollars. Thank you, Heather. The reason we did that is because my laptop is going to die in fifteen minutes.
Yep, mine's still good.
And we have a lot left on the agenda that we haven't even started. And that's a F-250 for the DPW Director. It was approved by the Capital Improvement Committee. Ambulance number two replacement of a hundred and twenty-five dollars. The remainder was funded through ARPA funding.
Hundred twenty-five thousand.
What did I say?
Hundred twenty-five dollars. It's a good deal. They're all, everyone here's for it.
I'm sure.
Only a hundred twenty-five bucks? Where did we do the collection?
Yeah.
Six thousand dollars is for the library doing a assessment of... Basically, we're paying someone to tell us what we need to fix and in what order. And nineteen thousand dollars is a standing commitment, it's usually twenty. But I forget what needed a thousand dollars, but someone needed one thousand dollars, and I wanted to stay at three ninety. So we're going to do nineteen thousand dollars for town IT replacements this year. Article Thirteen is to see if the town will transfer a sum of fifty thousand dollars from free cash to replace a boiler at Hubbardson Center School. This was brought to our attention earlier this year, or late last year, from the Superintendent's Office. And due in part to the regional agreement, anything over five thousand dollars gets paid by the town. So, Slickman, Walker, Peter, and I went and checked out the boiler about three weeks ago. It is an aging boiler, it is approximately thirty-three years old. I realized that day I know very little about boilers, but we need to, to purchase that.
Is it leaking?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
It's all in one?
All you need to know about boilers.
And the two options were to fix it at fourteen to twenty thousand dollars or replace it at forty-five to fifty.
Yes.
So, and looking at the ROI of that, it was determined that the better option would be to fix it. We looked into green incentives and that kind of program, even National Grid, but turns out a big oil-burning boiler does not qualify for green incentives.
And also, just one thing on that, the replacement of getting that boiler is, what, how many months?
It's thirty-six months.
Thirty-six months to get a boiler. We're dealing with a leaker for thirty-six months. I mean, I can foresee a big orange thing outside, temporary boiler going in there when it finally dies, because you can't get the boilers.
Wow.
Article Fourteen is seeking twelve thousand dollars to enter into a municipal consortium with the towns of Templeton and Winington to conserve prices on brine. If you don't know what brine is, as neither did I, it is something that we put down in the winter time to pre-treat the roads.
So what's the goal here? Entering together to bulk purchase now?
Travis? No, he's here.
No.
So that, we've been trying to get into brine, we couldn't get it into it before because we don't have town water. So, anyone that's been around since I've been at the DPW, I've been trying to do this. So now, everybody talks about combining with other towns. So, I have finally got together with Templeton and Winington. So the fifteen thousand would be our portion to go in, which would buy the brine maker, what's needed, a tank, so we would have it over in Templeton, so we could drive our own vehicle over there to load it, and we would be charged, which we'd be invoiced for what we use. So, using brine, it cuts down on how much we put for salt on the road. So instead of putting two hundred and fifty pounds per lane mile, you would put down twenty-three point three pounds per lane mile, and you'd be able to pre-treat up to a week in advance. So, at times when we're not sure what could happen, the roads could be prepared and makes it a lot safer. It helps with the costs of overtime, fuels, wear and tear on vehicles, where I could have a person, if not two, if we get a slide-in ease for one of the trucks. Then I would only have two on regular time, pre-treating the town before we go home. So it has a lot of benefits to a town, and it also puts less chlorides into the ground.
Awesome.
Perfect, thank you, sir.
So, just one more clarification on that, Travis? So the twelve thousand is essentially to get what we need to buy in? Or that includes the cost of the brine? Or is the cost of the brine when we're getting invoice is separate?
We're invoiced for what we used. The twelve is for buying in and helping, that goes towards the brine maker, the tank, and products needed to make it a system.
So it's a one-time purchase?
One time.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. The next funding are the CPA articles, which is the Community Preservation Act. It has been around for some time now, so I'm sure most of you are familiar with that. It is to transfer thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and ninety dollars from accrued Community Preservation Act Undesignated Reserve to fund the FY twenty-four Annual Debt Service application, which they do every year. Article Sixteen, to see if the town will vote to appropriate the sum of twenty thousand, four hundred and eighty-six dollars from accrued CPA reserve to fund the debt service for roof replacement of the Hubbardson Public Library as previously approved in two thousand and eighteen, which is a yearly article. To see if the town will vote to, will appropriate or reserve from CPA annual revenue the amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for administrative expenses. Where's that number? The appropriation this year would be five thousand dollars, that's an annual article as well. That's all can be found on the website. The total anticipated funding here, they break down the reserves that they're spending from in the, in the articles at the bottom. And if you need sleeping material, you can go read that on your own time. Now, the general articles, it was... These, I'm going to explain them all in one false loop. The Charter states in one of its portions that if a position goes unfilled for two elections, well, the way it says exactly is, if a position has at least...
Failure to elect.
Two, a failure to elect in two consecutive elections for multiple member bodies, then they are to be considered to go from elected to appointed. That's what we're doing here at the recommendation of my office and the outgoing town clerk for the Finance Committee, Board of Health, Parks and Recreation, and Cemetery Committee. All of those boards have had a very hard time finding people to run for the seats, and it is the consensus of the Select Board, myself, the town clerk, and several others that it would be substantially easier to fill these roles with appointed individuals versus making people run for office and gather signatures to, to volunteer.
Nate, if I can just add to that?
Yes.
So if I recall the language of the Charter as well, it doesn't say that the Select Board should consider? It says the Select Board shall place on the warrant. So this is really consideration of the townspeople for how they want to proceed? Our hands are kind of tied based on how the Charter's written, that we're obligated to put this before the townspeople as a result of the failures to elect, for the townspeople to decide how they wish to proceed on this one.
Yep, and then the other portion of this is the legal talk to send it to the state to make it happen. Article Nineteen is to see if the town would be interested in allowing the Select Board and myself to look into a municipal aggregation program. There will be a lot more information on this. This is a lengthy conversation in itself, that one hundred percent, there will be more information on this. There are municipal aggregation programs in a lot of the communities around us. The quick version of this is you get a better deal by coming together. No one, if this was chosen, no one would be forced in, you would have to opt out. But there will be a lot more information on this going forward. The Article Twenty, uh, let me go back. Article Twenty is to amend the zoning bylaws by replacing words such as Board of Selectmen with Select Board, Chairman with Chair, and Select Board Members. Those is just some, some housekeeping. Article Twenty-One does it in the general bylaws. Article Twenty-Two cleans up some of the, again, it's just a clarity. Article Twenty-Three is clarity and consistency within zoning. And Article Twenty-Four is a solar bylaw zoning article, which there will be a lot more information about. And you can go and watch the incredibly riveting planning board meetings where they have discussed it at length. That is the end of my TED Talk.
Was there another article that pertained, zoning bylaw article that pertained to child daycares?
Well, I can comment briefly on those if you'd like.
Yes, sir.
So, in Article Twenty-Three, for the most part, we are trying to adjust our bylaw, our zoning bylaws to what everybody thought our zoning bylaws were. Because there were all kinds of issues with some of the changes that were made, where there weren't changes made in other places. So, for the most part, it's all formatting to try to make things consistent. There are three substantive changes that are in it, though. The first one is, is for, for reasons that I haven't been able to find out, we require a special permit for somebody to open up a daycare. And that's actually illegal under state law, under the Dover Amendments. We did the same thing with greenhouses, which is also illegal under state law. You can't require a special permit for a greenhouse. The other substantive change is that we actually have a loophole that we've, that we've discovered saying that you can essentially put a cell tower anywhere in a residential district, because the way it's written, it's just written as an allowable use. So, we're, we're looking to fix that, to have that reference Article Eighteen, which is our cell tower bylaw, to, to close that loophole. And then, in following years, we're going to revise that bylaw to modernize it in itself. The next one is the solar bylaw, and we're making some changes that we've learned from going through and granting a few of those. The first one being is that there was a loophole that was left in that bylaw that allowed somebody to have the setback or the buffer zone if they thought trees were screening the panels. So, we're getting rid of that. The, the buffer is the buffer, and people just need to deal with that. Because we have a couple of projects where the developers took advantage of that and it kind of eliminated effective screening. And we've heard from our constituents that we don't like that. Well, we don't like that either. You shouldn't have to stare at a giant solar field under your window. So, we're making some changes to, to close that loophole. And then the other changes that we're making are, are mostly related to the process in terms of the documents that people have to submit to the planning board, what the plans have to look like, those kinds of things.
Beautiful. Thank, thank you. Anyone that has any questions on that can forward them to Chris or myself, and there will be plenty more opportunities to hear about this and discuss them further. That being said, we, I will hand it over to Chair Williams to start the actual Select Board meeting.
Again, to those of you, we appreciate it and thank you very much. And as some of you pointed out during this, to be educated helps a great deal, because I, myself, over the years, when we're here at our meetings, and basically, it's basically just ourselves. And then you wonder if anybody even knows what we're doing, or cares, or this or that. So, like, we do appreciate this, and please don't be strangers, and feel free to come in at any time if you have questions or anything you want to let us know about.
There are papers available in the town clerk's office until next Tuesday to run for one of twenty positions. There are currently many that would be uncontested, so take a look.
With that, I would ask the Finance Committee to adjourn and...
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, aye.
And we will be...
Adjourn at eight-twenty.
We will be going into our open session now. You certainly willing, and people invited to stay, but if any of you want to leave now, we'll, we'll wait a couple of minutes to let you go.
So, anybody that wants to leave that's interested in the Public Safety Building Committee, can you put your name and address on this piece of paper, please, and we'll reach out to you at some point?
Or, you know, hang out ten minutes?
Or hang out ten minutes.
It's like literally.
Yeah.
Or not even.
It'll be less, it'll be less than that.
Everybody finished with me?
Yes, thank you, Kelly.
Those of you who want to leave, feel free to take, take a moment.
Have a great weekend.
If I see no movement, then we will go on without meeting.
You better not. You're all talking about the public safety, don't need to lie, thinking nobody's leaving.
All right.
So, you're all saying, all right, okay, we'll proceed for open session. Anyone here for open session? Okay, moving on. Katie, any announcements?
I'm going to make it super quick. So, keep Hubbardson beautiful. It's this Saturday from eight till noon, we will have a dumpster out there. The Boy Scouts will have their electronic recycling. The fee schedule is on the town website under Special Events and/or on any of the social media platforms. And there's also flyers in a lot of the towns' businesses. The Girl Scouts will have a bottle and can drive. You can get trash bags there or fill up the trash in the front yard, you know, along the street with your own bag, bring it, throw it in the dumpster. Again, eight to noon this Saturday at the Rec Field. Keep Hubbardson beautiful day, that's all I got. Let's roll.
Thank you, thank you very much. We have a consent agenda, benefit of the board, we are all at the meetings that we need to pull before. For the appointment, then we will be waiving the waiting period. And wage authorization for Christine Barbero, Library Director, and Roberta Tibo, physician reclassification and wage authorization. If there are any holds, speak up now. If not, I would appreciate a motion.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion made and second, any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
I died.
There you go.
Brings us to, brings us to new, new business. The Public Safety Building Committee. Open it up.
Public Safety.
The Public Safety Building Committee is... All right, so it is a longstanding understanding that the town of Hubbardson is in great need of a public safety building. And we, the Select Board had previously placed some ARPA money into, looking into the feasibility of a property on Gardner Road. Recently, we met in executive session and discussed the needs and desires of the Select Board in order to obtain kind of what I call marching orders for myself and members of the staff moving forward, so we wouldn't be working in different directions. During that time period in executive session, that the minutes will, in a couple of weeks, be made publicly available, it was discussed that a majority of the board's interests had changed from the property on Gardner Road, and we would be more interested in looking into building a new building versus renovating an existing property. With that, I had mentioned bringing together a group of people. I don't have my paperwork in front of me anymore, so I'm just, I'm bringing this. I mentioned bringing together a group of people that would discuss the plans and kind of drive this hopefully from soup to nuts. Meaning that they would work to figure out what we want, what they think the appetite of the... Meaning that they would work to figure out what we want, what they think the appetite of the of the residents and the population would be at this time. Work to eventually figure out who to work with as an engineering firm and be the owners of this project. What I'm looking for from the select board this evening is a motion to move forward with the creation of a charge for said committee, which I will present at the May first meeting. The reason I did not just throw a charge together is because I did want to open up the conversation with, to the select board and to anyone that may have interest in it to kind of take note from your opinion of what the charge should say and what we're looking to do. Like, of course, we could throw together something super simple that says, this is a public safety building committee and they're gonna build a public safety building. But that's not really what I'm personally looking to to build. I would like these people in this committee to understand what their task is a little more than, hey, somehow figure this out. Because when I was in Princeton, they had a very similar committee and they sort of lost the lost, not even focused. They they lost their gas and their ability to move forward just because they had no
Guide.
No guide, no push. So that's kind of
Milestones.
That's what I wanted to open to this like, right, this evening. Obviously, I can pull together the bones of the structure. But having the experience that you all have, I was hoping to kind of fill the remainder of it. So.
Are you looking for those pieces of feedback now, Nate? Are you looking for them by email? How are you looking for the pieces of feedback? Like, do you want us to tell you about?
I did not expect the budget hearing to go two hours. So my original thought was to have a discussion. But at this point, as we push eight thirty, if we, the select board would like to send ideas for the charge, we can do that. And I can also send out an email to everybody, opening up ideas for said charge to the general public. Bring them all together, mix them up, put together what I think is either the best proposal or one or two. I probably won't write three. And bring them to our next meeting.
I think what we've done for our past committees, whether it be ARPA or anything else we've created, we've generally just hashed out pretty pretty succinctly what we're looking for membership. I think we can do that for this evening. And that way it gives the public an idea of, you know, what we're looking for and how many public seats we're looking for. So they can either think if they're interested or, you know, if they have someone they can wrangle who they think would be great at it.
What would be a workable number?
Seven.
Seven.
Yeah, seven's what I was thinking as well.
I think this, we try to get a
So I'm thinking at least one fire, one police, right?
Or the chiefs of each usually.
The chiefs of each, yeah. Well, they can put forth themselves. That's fine, sir.
SB. So one of us.
A select board member. That's three.
FINCOM.
Four.
And then three residents.
And three public.
How do you feel about that, Peter?
It's lovely.
Jeff?
Okay.
I think that sounds good.
We're pretty succinct with the numbers.
I like it.
Yep. No arguing.
And then that gives people an opportunity, you know, whether we start advertising now for that or whether people wait for the mission. They can think about whether they're interested in potentially serving and they know that there's gonna be three vacancies for members.
Let's let's get real. How long do we think this is going to last to the EWS committee?
Oh, it's it's gonna be a multi-year.
Years.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
A multi-year commitment. I'd say a minimum of two.
So that's that's why I want to put it out now, like
But not weekly meetings.
Not.
No, but
Weekly meetings.
But you're looking at, you know, especially to get these up and running on unless something holds it up or you're waiting for a report or something back, you're looking at monthly
Yeah.
monthly commitment for a substantial period of time. Yeah.
While you're getting bored, yeah.
Because you're looking at, you know, what, you have to review what's already been done before, what the plans were before, look at all those pieces. You have to look at, you know, do we need to do a new feasibility study? Do we need to do a new design, surveying public?
And all those things take time, take time to go out there, well, it's come back.
I'm thinking this is gonna be at least a three-year commitment realistically.
And so it's people who have to be interested in this stuff and think that they have the time and the interest and
Yeah, because it's not a long
And that different portions in time, the needs are gonna change. Like, at the very beginning, you're gonna need someone that can think large and understand the the needs of the town and the public safety professionals. Then it quickly turns into where an engineer is the most important thing to have. And at the very end, you need someone that's real good at communications. So it's, this is going to grow and at different points, if we need to sort of swap up.
Well, yeah, it can change, just like um Town Center Committee. But for the bulk, the Town Center Committee, those people sat on that committee for the bulk of the time.
I might, I might not lead with a three-year commitment.
No, that's what I'm saying.
Because I'm already gonna tell you that I'm not gonna do that.
But I'm just saying, this is gonna be, I want to be realistic. This is gonna be at least three years. Yes.
Well, the committee, it's the 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 project itself may take that long, but the but the
Yeah, they don't have to stay on it.
but the ask, the ask of a particular committee member will not be
No.
to remain for the for the entire
No.
No.
But it might take longer as well. But the whole thing is
Yeah, they don't have to be there for the whole project.
No, that's that's
But it's not gonna be as long as it's
I think the committee should be flexible enough so that over that period of time, as we just talked about, when it's time for an engineer, you can get an engineer and it's now on the committee. So as you need, you know.
Well, yeah, that that would be good. But I think, but I I would I would think that the that the ask of of the participants might be somewhere between six months and a year.
I think the idea is to make sure that we're clear that we're hoping that people who are submitting, because this is a big thing, right? Just like when you have any of those big pieces like Screaming Committee for TA, I think everyone's interested in these types of pieces, right? Has a huge impact, has a dollar impact, hits your pocket, um has its public safety impact. So people want to be involved in it. But I think we want to emphasize that we're looking for people who are gonna be in for the longer haul. We don't want changeover every three to six months because we want people to be able to continue. It takes so long to get someone new up to speed every time you get to that next hurdle that you really want as many people as you can to be consistent throughout the process. So you're not continuing, you know, you're on year one point five and all of a sudden you have a new member and you're starting all over again, the conversations.
Where they start arguing, we need to go down this path. You know what I mean? And like change, try to change everything up. And that's what I'm saying. It's, I'm not saying, you know, it has to be the higher length, but it's not gonna be like a two meetings and we're done.
I think our interest from the board's side of the table is gonna be looking at people who are gonna be able to commit for a longer period of time and allow the committee to have stability.
Yep.
I think FINCOM's a little wonkier because you guys, you know, are a committee and you meet and, you know, theoretically you could be more like a liaison.
Let me ask you why you think FINCOM should be on the committee?
I think sometimes a lot of towns find that it's beneficial to have a representative from FINCOM because they have the financial, um they're kind of like the financial watchdog for the town.
What you need is somebody from the capital planning committee.
Well, I thought of that, but then at the end of the day, what happens is the project goes before capital as a capital item, right? So they're gonna be
Well, yeah, but it's gonna be in front of the select board also. I mean, I
I know. I just, I I hear you just saying, I'm not sure.
Isn't there one of you that you, he's on both. He's it. That's it, right there.
You're right there. Yeah.
He's a two for one.
You just volunteered.
Yeah, he's a two for, you just volunteered yourself.
Chuck's a two for one.
There you go. Actually, Susan volunteered for you, so.
Yeah.
Thank me later.
Ah, good stuff.
All right, uh Mr. Chair, would you accept the motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we task the town administrator with the creation of a charge for a Hubbardston Public Safety Building Committee um for review and consideration at our May meeting to consist of a severance member body including a representative from each of the police department, fire department, select board, FINCOM, and three members of the public.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and second. Any discussion? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes, opposed, motion carry. Okay, thank you. Uh it's all business. I, we don't have any other
Yeah.
aware of.
All town administrators.
Everybody sign up.
Whoever's interested in being on that committee.
Town administration.
We're looking for I feel like I said a lot.
Uh policies not anticipated, not as not readily anticipated. Anyone have anything to bring that we weren't anticipating? Okay, public questions?
Thank you.
Press? Okay, uh so this brings us to the end of the open session meeting. We will be adjourning from open session and moving into an executive session.
Just email address?
Sure. Name and
Oh, I think it's not for you. I think we're okay. I think we're okay if we keep going. We're just gonna make a motion and then
We will be moving into an executive session and
Thank you.
We will adjourn from an executive session, maybe back into open session, but strictly for adjournment.
Mr. Chairman, would you accept a motion?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we move into executive, guys. Hey, Susan! I need thirty seconds for motion. I'd like to make a motion to enter into executive session pursuant to general laws, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one A, purpose three, to discuss strategy with respect to pending litigation, Vertex versus Town of Hubbardston, USDCCA number one twenty-two CB eleven five five one ADB, regarding a cell tower proposed to be erected off Main and Brigham Streets along with the members of the Zoning Board of Appeals and Town Council. Carolyn, I only, uh we will enter into executive session and return to open session only for the purposes of adjournment.
Okay, that motion's been made.
Second.
Second. Any any discussion? Okay, uh by voice, Peter?
Yes.
Heather?
Yes.
Katie?
Yes.
Jeff? Yes. We are now in executive session.